Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular meeting for the Planning Commission of August 3rd, 2022 is now 5:43. If I could ask for a roll call, please?
Good evening Commissioners, Commissioner Fonda Bernardi is out, Commissioner Fresco?
Here.
Commissioner Lambert?
Here.
Commissioner Landris? Is out, Commissioner Tolkien?
Here.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Here.
And Chair Reese?
Here. Thank you very much, moving on to our first Agenda Item 1A is the Director's Report, if we have a Director's Report, we'd appreciate it, Mr. Martin?
Good evening Commissioner. Waiting for the slide to show up, so after tonight, our next meeting is August 17th, on that agenda, we have a fence wall hedge modification appeal at 241129. We have a major modification and conditional use permit at 2668 Second Street, and then also that night, we will be bringing the red lines for the Economic Recovery IZO to make it permanent. So, you know, that's something that was adopted when COVID hit, and this is what allows the places where you see outdoor dining and parking lots, this isn't the Parklet Program, that's already gone through, and that was approved by council. This is related to outdoor dining on private property as well as on the Third Street Promenade, so we'll be getting the Commission's input on that, and then that will go on to City Council. There's also an upcoming public workshop on August 22nd, 6:00 to 7:30, and that's to discuss objective design standards. Seven, I'm not sure, is that, I don't see a location, is that a virtual?
That's a virtual, that's a virtual meeting.
So information about how to access that will go out, I actually received a notice today, so people should be getting that. At the last council meeting on July 26th, there was one item related to planning 710 Broadway, the final map, so that was approved by Planning Commission when you approve the project, and this was just council approving the final map for the project. In case you're not aware, that project is moving forward pretty quickly, the funding for the affordable housing piece, and in order to take advantage of that, they need to pull permits by the end of the year. So they're actually under construction on some of the utilities already, but we will see that project raking ground very soon. We understand from the developer that bonds will close September, October, so within the next month or two, that grocery store will be closing. And then coming up at City Council, actually, they have a special meeting tonight, so this is, again, take up the issue of the rent control ballot measure that will be on the November ballot. If you've been following that, there's a lot of discussion about the language in the ballot measure, the, really, the amount of increase that would be allowed, and how that will work, so, again, it's been somewhat contentious issue. And in order to settle on the language before the deadline, which is coming up very soon, the council scheduled a special meeting for tonight, and that's the only item on their agenda other than some closed study, or closed session items, but this is the only open item. The August 9th meeting for council has been canceled, and then on August 23rd, they'll be meeting, and we have the Carl Sorensen CUP appeal, which, I don't know if you still remember, you guys saw this a long, long time ago. It got appealed, we've had it scheduled a few times, and it's been continued for various reasons, but we're hoping to get that wrapped up on the 23rd. That concludes my update, and happy to answer any questions may have.
Great, thank you very much, and I see a question from Commissioner Lambert.
Hi David, thank you, when can we expect to see the SB9 red lines, my first question, number two, are we seeing any SB9 activity?
I can answer the second part of your question, last time I checked in with Jane, we have not seen any SB9 applications. If staff knows anything different, but that was as of a couple of weeks ago. The red lines, I'm not sure, let me check in with Jane when she gets back next week, and then we'll send you an email.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, just for everyone's benefit, if we have any progress with HCD with respect to the housing element?
We haven't heard anything from them yet, so as you know, they have 60 days from when we turned it in, we have been in communication, we're trying to be as proactive as possible, answering any questions they have if they're confused about something. So we are working as closely as possible with them, but, yeah, we haven't, haven't heard really anything one way or the other.
Okay, thank you very much, any other questions Commissioners? Dean None, I'm gonna go on to other announcements, there's a public comment procedure announcement, please note today's procedures for public comment, we are accepting real-time oral public comment by phone for each item. Please check the top of the posted agenda for a phone number to call in, once the caller queue for each item is opened, the caller queue will open when each item is introduced, and will close after we've heard from the fifth public speaker. Written comments received up to noon today have been read by the Commission, comments received after 12pm will be considered part of the record proceedings, but not posted online with the Planning Commission's agenda prior to the meeting. One related, additional announcement is there is a moderator chat function on BlueJeans, that is for technical assistance only with the administrative staff. We cannot communicate between ourselves, nor can we communicate with the public, so again, that is only for administrative issues you have with BlueJeans. With that, Commissioners, do you have any announcements? Haven't seen, no. We'll move on to the consent calendar, and now Commissioners, we had this on the agenda the last time, and because we did not have a full slate of Commissioners, we did not vote on it. I for one didn't want to vote on the 15th because I was not there, so I'd like to see what the pleasure is of the Commission, should we go ahead and continue this again until we have all seven members? Even mine, these were two pretty important meetings regarding our housing element. So I would entertain any discussion or a motion on this.
I think because it's so important, if it's not gonna cause any headaches for staff, and if they need these minutes approved for anything, I think it would be better if we waited until everyone who was present was here to vote.
I'm gonna take that as a motion, can I get a second on that?
I'll second.
Okay, I got Commissioner Raskin as a second, so we have a first and a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Commissioner Fresco?
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert?
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Commissioner Tolkien, you're muted?
Yes, sorry.
Vice Chair Raskin?
Yes.
Chair Reese?
Yes. With that, moving on in our agenda, we have no study session items under Agenda Item 3, Agenda Item 4 is continued items, which we do not have any. Item 5, staff administrative items, we do not have any, we'll get to the main event, which is public hearing 6A. This is for 710 Santa Monica Boulevard, a CUP, number 22 ENT-0096 is a conditional use permit to allow the operation of an automobile vehicle, sales and vehicle service and repair. Use for the sale and repair of Triumph motorcycles at the ground floor of an existing 7,000 square foot building, most recently used as a car rental facility. The site includes seven surface parking lot, I'm sorry, seven surface, seven parking spaces on a surface parking lot. I would ask for a staff, well, first I'm gonna ask for any disclosures, please. Commissioner Lambert?
I went out to the site this afternoon around 3 o'clock and wandered around and drove around the residential area surrounding it.
Seeing no others, I will just chime in to say that I walked by the site the last two nights and checked out the, the site itself and the surrounding community. I would remind anybody interested in speaking on this to get into the caller queue, I will announce this again, but at this point, if we get a staff presentation, we would appreciate it.
Thank you Commissioner Reese, please bear with me for one moment.
Well. Say that again?
He's, he's, he just asked us to wait a second while he tease up his, his presentation.
There we go, now we're in action. Good evening Chair Reese and Commissioners, my name is James Combs, I'm Associate Planner with the City Planning Division. The item before you tonight is a conditional use permit request for a vehicle sales use and for a minor vehicle repair use for the sale and repair of Triumph motorcycles. Just for clarity, our zoning code uses the term vehicle and automobile interchangeably, sometimes referring only to automobile requirements. In my report and in this presentation, the terms vehicle, motorcycle, and automobile are being used interchangeably unless stated otherwise. The site at 1710 Santa Monica Boulevard was developed in 1946 with the existing two-story building. This stretch of Santa Monica Boulevard between Lincoln and 20th Street is identified in the land use and circulation element as an automobile-oriented corridor, and is developed with a variety of automobile dealerships, repair shops, and other related uses. The immediate area is developed with a Volvo dealership and related vehicle storage lot, a GMC Buick dealership, a car rental office, and a few office buildings. The property immediately to the south of the subject parcel. The property immediately to the south of the subject parcel is developed as a private parking lot and is zoned general commercial. To the south of that, on the screen labeled as 1417, is where the residential neighborhood begins. Here we have a few pictures of, taken from the corner of the property at 17th and Santa Monica Boulevard. The upper left, we have looking east, this is the GMC Buick dealership that is across the street from the subject property. In the upper right, we have a view of looking down 17th Street, south, over here on the left, you can see the hedges that make up the 17th Street property line of the subject parcel. In the bottom left, we have a view looking west, where you can see the Volvo dealership on the right, and their vehicle storage lot on the left. And in the bottom right, we have a close-up view of that adjacent parking lot to the south of the subject property. The subject property has historically been used for auto repair and was briefly permitted as an automobile dealership in 2004. In 2005, the site was granted a performance standards permit to operate a car rental facility which operated until recently. As detailed in my staff report, as part of the performance standard permit which conditioned the car rental facility, they were required to install buffer landscaping along the perimeter of the property which reduced the number of available parking spaces to the four that exist on-site today. In order to offset the loss of parking, the PSP conditioned that the second floor not be used unless adequate parking is provided. As far as staff is aware, there are no use permits having been issued for uses at the upper floor, and it is not being reviewed as part of this request. The proposed motorcycle dealership would not result in any additional floor area or significant exterior modifications to the building. In this picture here of the facade, you can see the existing landscape buffer around the parking lot, and the large windows along Santa Monica Boulevard that will activate the street and allow views into the showroom from the sidewalk and street. As discussed previously, the second floor is not part of this request and restricted at this time. The existing site shown here is limited to the hatched building itself, the loading area and the parking lot. The great areas of a plan are adjacent properties not included in the scope. An existing low hedge identified in green wraps the parking lot along Santa Monica Boulevard and 17th Street. A roughly five-foot-high block wall shown here in red on the south property line currently exists immediately behind the repair bays. A low iron picket fence defines the remainder of the south property line identified on this plan in orange. The parking lot includes seven stalls which remain suitable for the proposed use. In keeping with the vehicle sales, vehicle repair standards of the zoning code, vehicle entry to the site is taken from the existing driveway apron on 17th Street and off of Santa Monica Boulevard. Unlike with car dealerships, product and vehicle delivery of motorcycles will occur using vans or small box trucks, and will take place on-site in the indicated location on these plans. A formal loading plan will be reviewed and approved by the Mobility Division as a condition of approval. The existing repair bays at the rear south side of the building are proposed to be retrofitted for motorcycle repair, they were previously used by the rental car facility. On this interior floor plan, you can see that the majority of the interior space is dedicated to vehicle showroom and retail space along Santa Monica Boulevard. The primary entrance to the space is in the western corner along Santa Monica Boulevard. Repair and storage activity is provided interior to the building on the ground floor at the rear. The applicant is proposing hours of operation of 10:00 AM to 6:30 PM Tuesday through Saturday and will be closed Mondays and Saturdays. These proposed hours of operation are within the maximum of allowed operating hours of vehicle sales and vehicle repair uses as regulated by the code, which would normally allow vehicle sales to occur between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, vehicle repair between 7:00 AM and 8:00 PM and generally allowing loading to take place between 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The code mandated hours of operation will allow earlier operations than are proposed by the applicant and except for loading, allow later operation as well if the applicant wished to modify their business model in the future. The test driving route submitted with the application would give, would circle UCLA Medical Campus, given the sensitive use of site staff has included a condition of approval requiring a revised route be prepared that avoids UCLA Medical Campus and wherever possible utilizes streets designated as truck routes only. Upon further discussion with the applicant, however, Triumph Motorcycles does not generally offer test rides and instead offers regularly held demo days held off-site where customers can test drive the motorcycles. Nonetheless, staff will require a test driving plan be formally prepared as part of the application. As part of that condition, hours of a lot of test drives would be regulated under the vehicle sales hours of 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. The staff report does not include any further limitations on when test drives would be conducted, but considering public comments expressed noise concerns, the commission may consider including a condition to limit test drives to the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM in line with code allowances for operating exterior noise generating equipment. Further discussion about noise mitigation, a number of code provisions and standard conditions are already in place that would ensure the noise generated from a vehicle sales and vehicle repair use should not impact surrounding uses. All aspects of Chapter 4, the city's noise ordinance must be complied with at all times and would limit the volume of noise audible from the property line generated by any means, be it stationary equipment, speakers or idling motorcycles. All equipment installed on the site will be subject to noise testing to ensure compliance with the noise limitations imposed by Chapter 4. Although no equipment is proposed to be installed outside the building, there is a code restriction, restricting, sorry, the operation of all noise generating equipment that would be reasonably likely to cause an annoyance to a budding or adjacent residences, restricting that operation to not be allowed to operate before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM. Additionally, the code requires that all repair work should be conducted inside the building. In addition to the operating standards dictated by the code, project-specific conditions of approval have been included in the STOA to address unique circumstances associated with the site and repair sale of motorcycles. Those include proposed condition of approval number one, that the rear roll-up doors accessing the service bay shall be closed during all hours of operation except as necessary for the immediate movement of vehicles and equipment into or out of the building. Condition number four, prior to the building permit issuance, a test driving plan shall be prepared and presented to the planning director for review and approval, which avoids street zone for hospital mixed use and shall utilize designated truck routes where feasible. And condition of approval number five, which states that prior to building permit issuance, the applicant shall consult with an acoustical sound engineer to provide operational, mechanical, physical recommendations for ways in which to minimize potential impacts of motorcycle repair on nearby residential parcels. In addition to those conditions already drafted in the STOA and included in the zoning code, the PC may wish to consider whether it's appropriate to include these these conditions on your screen based on public comment received after publication of the staff report. To the greatest extent feasible while accommodating loading and circulation requirements, the south property line shall be landscaped with tall hedges to help mitigate noise impact. That the recommendations of an acoustical engineer be implemented to mitigate any noise impacts. That routine repair services shall be booked by appointment to reduce noise and traffic congestion. And that the hours of test drives be limited to the hours of 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. I apologize, appears to be a duplicate. In order to approve conditional use permit, the planning commission must make all eight of the required findings. Draft findings for your approval have been provided in the STOA. If we need to come back to these for reference, please let me know. So far as public correspondence, the applicant has informed staff that they have advertised a virtual community meeting to neighbors but had no attendees, although they did have phone calls regarding the meeting. The applicant has provided evidence that they reached out to mid-city neighbors and PICO neighborhood associations, but has stated that they did not receive any responses. Staff has spoken with one neighbor of the property and subsequently five additional emails have been submitted in opposition of today's request. As is stated in staff's staff report, the recommended action is for the approval of conditional use permit 22 ENT-0096 and the adoption of the official action, the statement of official action. Understand that the applicant is here if you have any questions. Additionally, I am available for any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank you for your presentations, Commissioner. Do we have questions? And I see Commissioner Lambert has a question. You're muted. Maybe you can unmute. Mute her. There we go. Leslie, I think you're unmuted now.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, I just have a couple really quick questions. One is when you talk about the landscaping of the southern property line, there's already an eight-foot masonry wall directly opposite the repair area. You're not, there's no anticipation of taking that wall down, is there?
No, not that I'm aware of.
That's a really important sound mitigation in itself.
Yes.
So as far as you know, that wall will stay up?
That wall is still proposed to stay up on the plants.
Okay, the other question I had, I mean, it's pretty clear in the STOA that test driving cannot happen on residential streets. So that's, that's clear, right? I mean, there's no question about that.
That's correct.
That would include 17th Court?
The alley, yes, test driving is also prohibited on alleys.
Okay. And then, and then also we've talked about onsite unloading, but that's not in the STOA. So I guess that's something we'll talk about later. Thank you.
Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, thank you very much, James. Thanks for taking some time earlier to answer some questions. I'll have more questions for the applicant team, but one question I have for city staff is there's a condition that says that noise generating equipment should not be operated before 8:00 AM or after 6:00 PM. I'm curious if motorcycles fall with the definition of noise generating equipment?
An interesting question. I mean, we could certainly, that is actually a code provision that is applicable for auto repair, auto sales uses if we wished to include that as a condition of approval, specifically to say that motorcycles wouldn't be able to run during those hours on-site. I believe we could ask the applicant if they would be favorable to that.
Got, got it, yeah. I mean, I'm sure we'll come back to that in discussion. I was just curious if.
The answer to that question, right, the answer to that question is that it's, those are vehicles and not noise generating equipment.
Got it. All right, that's, that's all the questions I've got for now.
Commissioner Tolkien?
Yeah, I, I'm thinking that it was important to add the planting on the south property walls and there's a fence there. It would help in reducing the noise if there's a dense hedge on that, in that area and it'd be easy to put against that wall. And I think that would help in terms of reducing the noise and also impact the view of that, of the whole development in terms of the local neighbors. So I propose that they do that. These hedges could be mounted on the wall or in the, in the pavement, just a couple of feet in front of that wall, which I don't think is appealing. And this is a small.
Commissioner, we're, we're in questions now. This sounds a little bit more like deliberations, unless you have a specific question?
No.
Any other questions of the commission right now before we turn it over? Commissioner Fresco?
Just to make sure I understand, so the second floor of this building is just like a dust catcher with mice running around? It's like completely sealed and unused?
Yeah, actually, there was a PSP condition that walls be erected and it be sealed.
Wow, okay.
So that, I was not here for that decision. But that is what is permanently applied to this property.
Okay.
Great. Okay, we're going to turn to the staff, but I'm going to ask, I'm going to, to the applicant's presentation, but I want to ask staff really quick. Commissioner Lambert is showing up twice. I don't think she's going to get two votes, but maybe we can take off one of her screens if possible. And with that, with that, we get, turn to the applicant team. You have a 15-minute presentation, you're not obligated to use all 15.
Thank you so much commissioners and thank you so much, James, for that presentation and all your guidance. My name is Dinael Kenawi and I'm representing the project at 1710 Santa Monica. And the scope of work is for a tenant improvement and remodel to change the use from an enterprise car rental to a Triumph motorcycle sales and minor repair. As shown before, this is the location of the project site. Highlighted in blue is the property and the parking area for our site. And then highlighted in green, just for reference, is the parking locations as shown before, and then in yellow are some car dealerships and sales around the area. And then behind the property in blue is the green parking and then beyond that would be the residential area. Here you can see the plot plan of the project and the location of the parking spaces. So the hatched area is our property and scope of work. Here you can see the location in the rear are the service bays and then the remaining will be retail space and service waiting area and bathrooms. And here's more detailed description of the location of the displays and service waiting area. And there's no permanent equipment that's going to be in the service bays, just a portable motorcycle lifts and air compressor. Here are some project site photos for your reference to get a better picture of what the project site looks like. So this parking structure here, you see after this wall is not part of our property. Take the picture from that side. And here you can see the alley that was referenced previously. And this is a picture of just another one of our Triumph facilities, so just to kind of give you an idea of what the retail space looks like. And after discussion with planner and speaking with the concerned constituent and discussing with the client, we agreed to some voluntary conditions that we think would alleviate some of the concerns. So test drives are not part of the operation like we stated or like James stated. But if in the event that test drives do take place, we would limit the hours from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM to avoid any disruption. And no, no work will be done in the parking lot. Garage doors will be closed most of the time to prevent customers from entering through the garage. And there will be an exhaust collection system in the repair area if they need to start the bikes indoors for any reason. The air compressor in the shop will be boxed in and sound insulated. This is standard practice because, you know, for the facility themselves, they don't like loud noises either for the customers walking around and looking at the retail. And so that was already part of the practice, but we would like to add that as a condition of approval as well. And any minor repair will take place by appointment only. And then just some additional items to note. There's been a lot of concern with the loud exhausts, but loud exhausts are no longer allowed cycles. And we're not legally allowed to work on aftermarket exhausts. So that should mitigate a lot of that, those issues and as well, we're hiring an acoustical consultant to do a study on noise mitigation, on the noise of the operation and noise mitigation practice first to implement. We don't foresee, you know, very loud noises, given that the exhausts are mitigated and sound. And as stated by James, demo days take place and that's how the test drives take place. They go out into an area where open space and they can really, you know, drive the vehicles. Driving along Santa Monica Boulevard with all that traffic wouldn't really do the motorcycles any justice. And also like James stated, they will be delivered on 19-foot Sprinter vans. So again, not very noise-producing vehicles. And this concludes the presentation from the applicant. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer any of your questions.
Thank you very much for your presentation. Let me just take half a second and remind the public that there is a call-in number and you should be calling in right now. We're going to get to public comments shortly. But with that, commissioners, do we have questions? I see Commissioner Lambert first.
Thank you. I just have a couple questions. Did you say that the wall in the rear is not on your property?
No, I didn't say that.
Oh, so it is on your property, so planting.
Oh, I'm saying at these cars here, like this, again, the wall, past the wall is no longer.
I understand that's a parking lot.
Yeah.
And when you do the test drives, so you take people out somewhere else to do the test drives?
So the Greg is available. He's the owner and he can speak to that a bit more if you'd like. But essentially with the demo days is they have all of the vehicles there and that's where they would do test drives because there is limited supply that's available at the, at the site and then also Santa Monica Boulevard, it's a busy street.
Okay, that's good to know. And then we're, I think we're probably going to ask for onsite offloading, so I assume that is okay with you?
Yes.
Onsite offloading, okay, that's all, thank you.
Other questions commissioners? Commissioner Raskin?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I've got, I think, three hopefully quick questions. If we were to nevertheless perhaps ask that test drives, should they be done, be limited to either the primary truck routes or some, you know, method of getting to this primary truck routes? I'm curious if that would pose a logistical problem on your end?
Hello, everyone. This is Greg McCord. I am the dealer that is trying to get this through. The, the, the test rides, so first of all, I don't think we've even done any test rides in the last few years in any of my stores. But if someone came in and, and said, hey, I really don't want to buy the motorcycle unless you give me an opportunity to ride it. We could do a guided ride with one of our staff members. And if, if it needed to be, it doesn't really matter where it is. It, it just maybe gives them an opportunity to test the motorcycle somewhat. But it's, if, if you decided that no test rides were, were in line with, with what we should be doing, I would submit to that. It's, it is not part of our business. It's it is not part of our business model. Triumph does hold these demo days in in open areas where customers can come. They're broadcasted and advertised, and customers can come and test ride the bikes and test ride several of them. But it doesn't do, we're in urban markets where often it doesn't do us a justice. Like in San Francisco where I'm at right now, it really hurts us more more than it helps us to let someone go out on the busy streets and and ride a motorcycle and try to get a sense of it. So that's why we steer the customers towards these demo days. But if if we do a ride, we can do it as a guided ride, a hosted ride. And if I I'm not entirely sure what the best streets are for the city in terms of not bothering any of the neighbors, but I'm happy to have you guys dictate that.
Got it, thanks. And another logistical question. If we were to ask for a condition that limited the amount of time that motorcycles could idle on the property, would that pose any logistical problems for you?
No, no. There's no reason that our customers would pull into the parking lot and keep their motorcycles idling. Remember now, the these are all modern European motorcycles. All of the exhaust, the decibel, the amount of noise that comes out of the motorcycles is all regulated by carb. We were not allowed to put any aftermarket exhausts on on the bikes. And we don't work on bikes with aftermarket exhaust because it avoids the warranties, and it's it's just not really our customer base. We're sort of the soft side of motorcycling. 25% of our customers are women riders. And so the notion of having a bunch of idling motorcycles on on premise is is really not our customer base. But yeah, we I'm happy to submit to that as a condition.
Got it, thanks. And, you know, in some other projects where we've had noise concerns, I think the last one was a dog kennel. The project applicants, they're offered to have a phone number where folks could call up if there are noise concerns. And I'm wondering if that's something you'd be willing to put into the conditions of approval? Got it, great, thanks. That's all the questions I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Raskin. Other commission questions? Commissioner Polken still with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, I just didn't see you, sorry. Do you have any questions?
No.
Okay, I have a couple of quick questions. I mean, I think I don't think anybody else has questions. I'll jump in. Can you can you clarify? I mean, looking at the survey now, that wall does appear to be on your property. But what is the height on the inside facing your building of that wall? I think I've heard five feet and eight feet today. It looks closer to five, but I'm just curious.
I think it's, yeah, it's probably four or five feet. I'm not, I'm not sure, to be honest.
Then on the landscaping, I mean, you guys are pretty clear in your drawings where your work scope of work is, which is really the interior of the building. But are you planning on any landscape improvements around the parking area? That's kind of an old shabby shrub there, and I'm wondering if there's something more enticing you can do or you're planning on doing.
I, we haven't come up with the exact landscaping plan as of yet, but I we are spending several hundred thousand dollars on on improving the building. And the, you know, the having the parking lot look nice and presentable is definitely that which includes the landscaping is is something that we absolutely are going to do.
Great. Okay, thank you. And then if you could talk a little bit to me about the exhaust. There was a mention that if there was, you had to turn on the cars, there would be an exhaust. You have to run, you know, ducking up to the roof. Is that already there? How does that get dealt with? And where would that be? And the more important question is, what direction is that pointing and where on the building is it?
Well, we're not, so we're not really starting motors inside the building. But if my my shop where I'm at right now in San Francisco, we do have a ventilation system that collects the exhaust. And it, I I cannot remember. I think it exhausts out the out of the roof. But it's a, it's, it would only be a technician starting a motorcycle for a couple of minutes. It's not a lot of exhaust that's pouring out of the building. And it's would only be a few times a day.
And I confirm that the wall is five feet tall.
Thank you very much. Okay, those are my questions for right now. So unless there are any other commission questions, I'm gonna turn to public comment. And the applicant will have an opportunity to respond to any comments that we hear. So again, for public comment, I want to just announce there is a caller call-in number at the top of the agenda, and you should call in and get in the queue right now because we would like to hear from you. Staff, do we have anybody in the queue?
Yes, we do. I will share the comment information and let them in. Welcome, caller. You have been unmuted, and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please state your full name and then go ahead?
Hello, I guess this is me, number one in the queue. My name is Lizbeth Bell, and I live at 1434 18th Street, around the corner from this site. I sent in extensive comments on my concerns. I don't know where to begin with my new concerns. I'd like to first tell you that Mid-City Neighbors is a fairly inactive organization right now, so I would not have expected them to comment. I did receive the virtual meeting, but I had been out of town, so I didn't call in on that. I'd like to point out that the residents who live adjacent to the parking lot are in two-story buildings and spend a lot of their time on the second floor where they have a nice view of the city. Now, I don't know what you're proposing in terms of the height of hedges, but you, you know, you might be affecting their view. And I don't really believe that hedges are going to mitigate motorcycle noise. These are not hybrid Priuses that we're talking about. They are motorcycles. They make noise. That's the whole point of motorcycles. I don't care whether they're European. I I've seen European bikes, and they're still noisy, and they emit exhaust. And if you're thinking about it putting the exhaust through the roof, they're actually go right into the neighbors' windows on the second floor. So I I'm concerned on a lot of things about this. This this does not seem to be the place to put a motorcycle facility. There are two motorcycle facilities on Lincoln Boulevard. I think Lincoln is a much better street for this kind of activity. Motorcycles are going to be coming into the facility. They're running their engines when they come in. I don't know what limiting the operation of the engines from 10 to 5 is gonna do. We're still gonna be bothered by the noise. A lot of us work at home, and it's, I just think this is a bad idea to put a motorcycle facility there. I'd like to also know from the owner, please, where are the demo days held? He said they're on open, open areas. I think there should maybe put a condition in here that the demo days are not in the parking lot. So I guess that's all I have to say. I'm very opposed to this, and I hope I do not see a motorcycle facility at this location. There must be something else the city can attract that is not detrimental to our environment as motorcycles. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Commissioners, do we, do we have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, and we'll go on to the next caller. Assuming we have one?
There are no other callers right now.
Okay.
I take that back. We just got one.
Okay, great, perfect.
Give us a second to hide their phone number. Okay, last, I don't see their last four digits, but anyway. Welcome, caller. Your microphone has been unmuted, and you are in the meeting, and you will have three minutes for your comment. Could you please first state your full name and then go ahead?
Hi, my name is Charlie Martin. Thank you for allowing me to comment. I'm gonna keep it very short. I think it's very positive. Are you able to hear me?
Yes, we hear you. Thank you for your comments.
Oh, okay, sorry. I think I had the feedback from from your broadcast.
You might turn that down. It'll help you, help you a little bit.
Okay, okay, thank you. I think the improvement moving forward that this motorcycle dealership is proposing is positive for for the neighborhood in that we'd hate to see it turned into an eyesore. The Triumph brand, or even a Harley brand, it it's, and you know, I guess if you're talking about new motorcycles that are catering to, this is a little more of an upscale clientele. I'm gonna say that very carefully there. But I I think it's it's positive. I don't, I've never thought of the Triumph brand or even the Indian brand as being something that's gonna be rambunctious out there. So, yeah, I think we'd like to see this in the in the neighborhood, and I think they can kind of, and I think that all of us know that, you know, within a couple of blocks either direction, we could use a little spiffing up of some of the business storefronts. And this gentleman, that's the applicant, he hit the hammer on the nail for me. When he said that they're they're gonna be spending a few hundred thousand dollars on the exterior to, you know, so these these kind of upscale motorcycle shops or car dealers, you know, that it's it's gotta have some curb appeal. And I'm confident these folks will have the curb appeal. So I haven't heard anything throughout the meeting that that gives me pause or concern. Thank you very much, everybody, and-
Excuse me, sir, we didn't catch your name.
It's Charlie Martin.
Thank you, Charlie Martin.
Great, thank you very much for your comments. We appreciate it.
Yeah, yeah.
Hold on, Mr. Martin. Let me just make sure that nobody has a question for you. Any questions, commissioners? Nope, we do not. Have a have a nice evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Martin.
And thank you for the work that you're doing.
Any other call, next caller?
There are no other callers.
Okay, great. Well, I'm gonna turn this back to the applicant. They have a rebuttal opportunity of three minutes.
Sure, so let me, I guess I'll go back to the voluntary conditions that- Yes, so I feel that the concerns that were addressed by the constituent, I had spoken to her in the past. I understand that there's, you know, concerns with the use, but in the general area, there are a lot, as you can see, of car dealerships and parking lots that are located here. And, you know, as stated, this is going to be a minimal traffic-producing type of commercial space. And with all of the conditions that are being implemented, we expect that this would be an improvement for the neighborhood and not a detriment. And I'm happy to answer any questions or discuss any of the conditions.
Great. Okay, commissioners, do we have more questions of the applicant? Okay, Commissioner Raskin, go right ahead, then I'll follow up.
Yeah, sorry, I've got one one quick question for the applicant team, then one question for for staff. For the applicant team, do you know offhand, just in terms of the miracle value, how loud the bikes are that you plan to have onsite?
Are you asking how many decibels the the average Triumph puts out?
Yeah, that's right.
I'm gonna hopefully give you an answer in one second here. Oh, gosh. I I don't, I don't know. I mean, I do know that we don't sell any loud motorcycles. And we're also by the end of by 2030, 50% of the motorcycles that we sell will be electric motorcycles that emit virtually no sound. So I I don't know the amount of debt. My my general manager's looking it up right now. I'm sorry, I I don't know how many decibels.
Why don't we allow Commissioner Raskin, why don't you ask your question of staff? And maybe he gets an answer, and he can respond to it, and maybe, maybe not.
Yeah, and, yeah, for for staff, is it your understanding that any noise coming from the motorcycles onsite would need to comply with the city's noise ordinance?
Yes, if the motorcycles are operating in the parking lot, they'd have to comply with the noise ordinance.
Got it. Great, that's that's all my questions, thanks. And yeah, thanks, Greg, for looking up that numeric value. Appreciate it.
Sorry about that, yeah.
Commissioner Lambert?
I just have a couple of questions. I want to make sure, Mr. McCord, that I understood you correctly. Would you be okay with the condition that there will be no surface street test drives?
If if you felt that was important, sure. I it does to be a big issue, and it's such a minor issue for us that we could do them somewhere else, or we could send the customer to to one of the demo days. They they happen way outside, and, you know, it's Triumph brings a big semi truck full of motorcycles for customers to test. And so we we wouldn't be able to do it in Santa Monica, nor would we want to.
Okay, that's good to know. Also, would you, and you said there would be no idling to speak of onsite, right?
No, other than somebody pulling into the parking lot and finding, figuring out where they're gonna park their motorcycle, then they would shut it down. There's no reason that they would leave it running.
Well, given gas prices, that would be kind of a silly thing to do anyway, wouldn't it be? Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Any other commission questions? I think my my, I was gonna make ask question, but I think it's more discussion, so I'll wait for our discussion, which I think is gonna come up. If I don't see any other questions, I'm gonna close the public hearing and turn to commission discussion. Is there anybody who wants to kick off that discussion? Commissioner Lambert?
For purposes of discussion, I'm gonna make a motion, actually. And that is that we approve conditional use permit 22 ENT dash 0096 with all the mitigation that we've been talking about included in the special conditions. My, one of mine I would like to insert is that there would be no surface street test test driving, and that all offloading will be onsite, which both of which seem to be acceptable to the to the applicant. So that's my motion.
Can we have a second? Or do we have a second? Commissioner Fresco, I'm-
I have, I'll second that, but I just want to know, does your motion include the conditions, the voluntary conditions that the applicant showed us, or just the ones-
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, absolutely.
Then I definitely- Then I definitely second it.
Okay, okay. And I think Sam's landscaping language should go in somewhere as well.
Um, I don't know, but that- I mean, they're gonna make it beautiful and I don't think, uh, I mean, that's part of their plan. And plants, as we have read in many sound reports, have no impact on sound. So, you know, I'm just concerned because the requirement of a hedge made them lose enough parking spaces that they can't use left.
And, and I will, I'd like to ask for a, a friendly amendment related to that, which is, they're gonna have to do an acoustic study and I'd like them to kind of weigh the value of that hedge versus raising up that five, four, four and a half, five-foot wall a little bit.
I think, yeah, raising the wall will make the big difference, not-
Why did I think it was eight feet?
Like, I'd like to-
Because you were sitting down?
Because the other side, from the other side of the property, it's a taller fence.
Awesome.
The parking lot, it is taller.
I got it. That's a friendly amendment.
Okay. Um, I would also ask for the friendly amendment of the phone contact number that Commissioner Raskin had talked about.
That's actually already in, that's already in there.
Okay, well then, then that's really friendly. Um, exhaust location being in the roof as opposed to facing the residential in the back. And the, and to respond to the, the community concern, you know, there's a lot of dissip- dissipation that will occur in the 40 feet between the residential properties as exhaust goes up. It won't go sideways. Um, and if it does, it's because there's a heavy wind and then that, then there's even more, more dispensation or disposition. Um, that's all I had as a friendly, friendly amendment.
That's fine.
Any other? Commissioner Raskin?
I've, I've got one more request for a friendly amendment, but before I, I do, I just wanna clarify one thing about the applicant's proposed, uh, conditions. Um, if, if it's possible to put those up on screen, I think that'd be helpful because there's one that spoke about, uh, the use of the roll-up doors. Uh, yeah, the third one says garage doors will be closed most of the time so as to prevent customers from entering through the garage. I think that the, the, the city prepared conditions say something to the effect of, uh, that garage door, the roll-up doors should be closed all the time except for the, uh, need to, uh, move vehicles and equipment in and out of them, so-
Yes, that's right. And, um, yeah, we think, uh, we believe that the staff condition should govern.
Also, that first, that first condition is moot because we, um, we're not doing test drives.
Right, so maybe we can have the collective understanding-
If I can share my screen, um, uh, so that, uh, we can, uh, clarify the conditions, please?
Well, I like the second part of that third, uh, bullet point, it was just a little bit there.
So I'm, what I'm doing here is, um, is combining, uh, staff conditions and applicant conditions. So, uh, these conditions, uh, have been included already in the STOWA. There are also additional conditions in the STOWA that aren't reflected here that include, um, that keeping the doors closed as Commissioner Raskin duly noted. Um, the additional conditions, and I'll read them, uh, this is, the blue ones are ones that, uh, staff has put forward, uh, to the greatest extent feasible while accommodating loading and circulation requirements. The south property line shall be landscaped with tall hedges. Do we hear that? That is, uh, something that's not agreed to and that the wall, the wall at the rear should be increased in height to eight feet?
If an acoustical engineer determines that it will actually make a difference in noise.
Okay, I'm gonna just take a moment to type it. Shall be increased to eight feet tall upon the recommendation of an acoustical engineer.
And Stephanie, the phone contact language is already in the STOWA.
Okay, good.
And if, if I may suggest not limiting it, not being so specific with eight feet, so maybe the increase would be subject to the recommendation of the acoustical engineer?
Yes.
Let's, yes, that's smart. Increase. Okay. Um, can, can you see these, by the way, and are they too small? Okay.
Stephanie, can you say ma- maybe increase instead of, I think it says, uh,
Well, okay. I said shall be, let's see. Um, shall be increased upon the recommendation of an acoustical engineer.
If, if recommended by an acoustical engineer.
Okay. Okay, I think that's, I think that reflects-
It's actually the south property line wall height shall be increased if recommended by an acoustical engineer.
Okay.
Oh, and Stephanie, where it says no test driving on surface streets, also add alleys.
Okay, may I go through my-
I think, I believe it says no test drive shall be offered from the location. I think that's simpler. I think that's what was agreed to. So no test drive, no test drive shall be offered from the location.
That's a good idea, okay. Okay, um, may I, um, is it okay if I just go through these one by one to make sure we have them? Um, uh, then we had an additional consideration or condition. The recommendations of an acoustical engineer, engineer shall be implemented to mitigate any noise impacts on surrounding residences. That would be in addition to raising the height of the wall. Um, routine repair services shall be booked by appointment to reduce noise and traffic congestion. Uh, no test driving shall be, shall be, sorry, sorry. Now I have an echo. Uh, no test driving shall be offered from the location. Um, all, uh, loading and unloading of vehicles shall be on the interior of-
Right, on the pla- on the property itself.
On site, onsite.
On the property. Sorry. Okay, so we have the wall. The phone contact is already included. Um, no work will be performed in the parking lot and the air compressor in the shop will be boxed in and sound insulated to mitigate noise.
On the work, it would be no repair work? Is that, is that the work that we're referring to?
Yes. I mean, a sales representative is gonna be talking to the public in the parking lot, that's okay.
Okay, so no repair work will be performed in the parking lot. So, um, these are the combined conditions that we have offered as staff and that the applicant has offered. Um, uh, am I missing anything?
I asked for one more that I think we're in agreement on. Uh, can we say, not quite sure how to phrase this, but I'm thinking of, uh, no idling condition. And I'm thinking of, you know, some threshold, maybe two or three minutes?
There's, there's a rule for trucks. Do you know what that is in alleys? I mean, that's sort of a different situation, but there, there is a city rule for that.
I need to know that rule.
Does, does the commission agree to three minutes as being a friendly amendment? And the, the motioner agree to as a friendly amendment?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Minutes on the property. How's that?
Well, it should say, no, I mean, inside the building with the door closed. Not that they would want to do it from within three buildings, so, uh-
Oh, wait.
Well, I was thinking on the, in the parking lot.
Yeah.
Having an idling in the parking lot.
Yeah.
But, well, uh, I, I would say on the subject property in general.
Who's gonna idle inside?
Yeah, I mean, the idling inside, you know, the repair, you know, as they repair, they may need to run the motorcycle now, is that idling?
Right, so that, that won't work on that.
Yeah, so I, I would say if, uh, Commissioner or Vice Chair Ellis, uh, intends, uh, in the parking lot, um, that may, uh, take care of the noise. Yes, sir.
Yeah, that, that's fine.
Okay.
Commissioner Tol- hold on just a second. Commissioner Tolkin, do you have something you wanna?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, you realize when you suggest that you add to that wall, that you cannot add to that wall. You have to rip it down and rebuild it. There's no way to add two feet to that wall or three feet. So, I'm talking about putting hedges there, dense hedges, that would accomplish as much as putting two more feet on that wall or three more feet on that wall.
Well, I personally, I personally would rather see hedges. I'm, I'm, I question, I question how well they work. That's why I'd like this, I would like to see the acoustic study look at hedges or extensions of the wall and I don't, I've seen walls-
You have to be aware that you're not talking about adding two feet to a wall. That's not possible. You have to rip it down and start over again. Then you might as well build a wall all the way from the property line, uh, at the street, back to where it is now.
Well, if the acoustical engineer says that that will help with sound attenuation, then that's what they'll do. That's what these conditions are saying.
I didn't get that.
I said if, the conditions are saying that if the acoustical engineer recommends that that would be the appropriate approach for sound mitigation, then that's what will-
We're saying it's just as good to put the hedges up, my dear, as put two more feet on that wall.
Well, I think the commission vision right now is that we're gonna let the acoustical engineer decide that.
Okay.
But again, I would rather personally see hedges than a wall.
Right.
I'll just say for the record that I lived for five years next to a repair shop on Pico. There was a hedge and it did absolutely nothing.
I lived next to a repair shop and my hedge has no impact.
But I bet it looks-
Well, I can't respond to that.
Okay, let's, I think we have a, a consensus on the, on the commission.
Um, that was a motion by, uh, Commissioner Lambert. Um, was there a second?
Fresco.
Fresco.
Hold on, before we, we vote, uh, I'm curious if, if the applicant team hasn't answered that question I asked earlier about the noise levels of the, uh, motorcycles, uh, at the site. And if not, that's fine. I, I'd just like to get that on the record before we, uh, close this up.
Yes, please. Yeah. The internet says 80 decibels and it's the same as a modern automobile, uh, gas-powered automobile. Uh, uh, modern Mercedes AMG puts out more decibels than that. So, we're actually, uh, quieter that, though, and, and, and if I could just say something about the wall, the parking lot next door steps down three or four feet. So, building an eight-foot wall makes it a 12-foot wall. It's going to be an eyesore, that, an unimaginable eyesore. And remember, there's not a bunch of sound that's coming out of our service area. Yeah, I, I, I will have an air compressor, but it's going to be boxed in and insulated. Uh, we probably change a few tires per day, so there, the tire machine makes some noise. But it's, you know, there's three technicians and it's not, it, it's, I, I, I think we're giving off the wrong impression of kind of noise that we're gonna be making.
Well, I, I, we appreciate that, but that's the whole point of having a noise study to, to, to educate, instead of us guessing at it, have a, a technician look at that and tell us whether there is a noise issue and if there is, how we will, how we can mitigate it.
Great. Fair enough.
But just to be clear about what a noise issue is, is it, that it, it would violate the noise ordinance? I mean, I guess I wanna understand what, what the commission's desire is with respect to that threshold because there are certainly uses around there that are not all quiet, um, in that area.
Well, I don't wanna speak for the whole commission, but I'm gonna say for myself, it's anything that violates the noise, anything over the, what the noise ordinance would allow. Otherwise, it's permitted by, by code.
Right. Uh, that sounds great.
But, that's a good refinement. Commissioner Raskin?
Well, I, yeah, I just say, you know, for the record, that my understanding is that the project will comply with the nor- with the noise ordinance and therefore there won't be any environmental impacts with respect to noise. Uh, and that the noise, the purpose of, of bringing in noise expert is to find further ways to address community concerns above and beyond what can be accomplished by compliance with the noise ordinance. At least that's my understanding.
But then, I think that leads us down a slippery, a little bit of a slippery slope, uh, Commissioner Raskin, unless we can define how much below the, the noise ordinance.
Certainly, if, if I may too, certainly if that's a mandatory requirement. Now, if it's something that, you know, they shall make reasonable efforts to mitigate, um, lower than that, that's probably a little easier, but, um, it's difficult to enforce, enforce if we're not, um, sure what we're looking for in the first case and then, and also, you know, the, the noise ordinance is certainly, um, what's protective of, you know, what the city has determined is protective of, of, uh, uses in the city.
Well, I mean, hold on a second, Commissioner Lambert, I'll get, I will let you speak in just a second. I wanna ask the question, well, what was city's, what was the staff's vision of the acoustic study then?
Uh, we do not require an acoustic study because we, um, based on the analysis we did, uh, we were comfortable that this would comply with the noise ordinance. And we had extensive conversations with our environmental planner, uh, and she thought so too.
Sorry, Stephanie, I'm gonna jump in. That is, uh, true of why a sequel level noise, uh, study wasn't prepared, but the statement of official action requesting the acoustical sound engineer was geared towards ensuring that the noise, uh, ordinance was being enforced. I'm sorry, did everyone hear my explanation?
Yeah, we heard you. Thank you, thank you, Planner Holmes. We appreciate that. Commissioner Lambert, go ahead.
I, I just, this is my final thing about this. I mean, I don't think we can ask them to, um, do anything but comply with the noise ordinance because there's a reason why the noise ordinance is in place and anything else would just be subjective and I'm not willing to do that.
Me neither.
Go.
So then, are we gonna take out the acoustic study? Because if they have to apply, but, apply to the noise, the noise ordinance, there's no reason for an acoustic study.
That's a good point.
What we can do is, um, is clarify that to say that, uh, an acoustical engineer, uh, the recommendations of an acoustical engineer shall be implemented, uh, to mitigate any noise impacts on surrounding residences and ensure that the operations comply with the noise ordinance. Or to ensure that the operation complies with the noise ordinance. And if you'd like, I can share my screen again so that you see that condition.
I mean, I don't know what standard we're gonna use, if not the noise ordinance, frankly.
Right. What we got?
I don't think we can ask for any more than that.
No, I, I think you're right. What are we gonna do about bullet one, Commissioner? Are we gonna leave that in there?
Well, that's kinda silly, that's kinda silly if we have the noise study that we're waiting for, isn't it? Or am I-
We could add the same provision. You, the second bullet point could read, "The recommendations of an acoustical engineer shall be implemented, uh, acoustical engineer, including but not limited to, uh, adjustments to the south property line, shall be implemented to mitigate any noise impacts," or something like that. We just combine it into the second one.
That's a good one. Who said that?
That's Heidi, of course.
Heidi, she's earning her keep today.
She's been so quiet. That's great.
Yep. Okay. Any, any further comments or questions, commissioners?
Nope.
Okay, I think then we have a, we have a motion, we have a second, we have some adut, adjustments to the STOA and it's time for a roll call vote.
I'll stop sharing my screen and, uh, call for the vote. That would be Commissioner Fresco.
Yes.
Commissioner Lambert.
Yes.
Commissioner Tolkin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Raskin.
Yes.
Chair Reese.
Yes. Great. Thank you very much, staff and applicant team. We're gonna move on to our next agenda item. Um, and as I move through our agenda, we have no resolutions. We have no written communications outside of what we had for this hearing tonight. The finding commissioner member discussion items, do we have any we want to add to that list? Not seeing anybody. We're gonna turn to public input, so staff, if you could put on the screen, the call-in number for general public input, this is on any issue that we did not discuss tonight that relates to the planning commission.
I always think we should have the music on during this period.
You mean, that's not actually playing? Cause I always hear that in my head.
We didn't receive any calls.
No calls? Okay. So with that, commissioners, I'm gonna thank you for your time tonight. I'm gonna adjourn this meeting at 7:03 in the name, or in the honor of Vin Scully, somebody who I bet most of us spent a lot of time with over our years.
Yes.
So with that, I hope you all have a wonderful evening and we'll see you on the 17th.
You too.
Bye.
Thank you, everyone.
Bye. Bye.